I will now call to order the meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. And will the clerk please call the roll?
City council members, Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Woo.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
The next item of business is approval of minutes of the previous meeting, December 11th, 2017.
I'll approve to move those, or move to approve those.
I'll second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Public input. So I first have a, from Eldress Melissa Carr. And she is in opposition, supports the Dr. Ellis subdivision petition for the city of Urbana to assume total financial responsibility for sewer problems on city property. And I assume this is in opposition then to the ordinance that's, that we'll be considering. And did you wish to speak? And do you wish to speak now, or at the time?
It depends now.
Okay. Give you a chance to get settled before we start the clock.
Good evening. My name is Eldress Melinda Carr, and I'm representing the Dr. Ellis subdivision committee in residence of the neighborhood. And at the November 13th meeting, we presented a petition with 96 signatures. And so I'm gonna present an updated petition with 103 signatures. And the petition, as I read before, is a petition for the city of Urbana to assume total financial responsibility for sewer problems on city property. And the gist of it is that we are asking the city to pay for repairs upfront with sewer funds set aside for this purpose, and not put the financial burden on residents for repairs beyond their property line, within the city's right-of-way, and on, and on other residents' private property. And I have another statement that I'm gonna read here. So I know I have five minutes, and I'm gonna try to make it through these five minutes. If this governmental body represents the entire community, then the amendment should also represent the configuration of the entire community with respect to the sewer system, and include the black community, which is what we represent. If it does not represent the entire community with the T-line, then you should amend the ordinance to make accommodations for the entire community. If you know the community doesn't have all the T-line, then you should have a special section to address the T-line. To approve an amendment that has clear inequalities remaining, you're saying certain communities do not matter. Other neighborhoods in Urbana deserve equal treatment as well, if one side of the street has more of a financial burden of the sewer system. One side of the street property will be, will be a different value. One side will be avoided when it is time to sell property, and the other side will be more attractive. Our community will not stand for inequality and greater tax burden of repairs to sewers on one side more than the other side. We expect fair and honest treatment, so that all communities matter. If in fact some sewer lines are so far from the T-line, and others don't sit so far from the T, the burden from the sewer system will be a greater financial hardship. If this governmental body fosters discrimination instead of representing the entire community and implementing an amended ordinance, we are very concerned about the future of our neighborhood sewer system and equity for sewer repairs. I also wanted to mention that we agree with the system of the following three cities, and taking the responsibility of the city right-of-way. The city did a survey, I think at the last meeting, some information was presented. And three of the cities that I will mention here in this information, the city looked at this option before, for the city, but the city chose not to do this option. And the appendix, I think appendix B of the survey that was done by Public, the Public Works Department, the appendix B was entitled Illinois Communities With Sewer Lateral Ownership and Right-of-Way Survey Results. And then the question, under the question, quote, "Who owns the sewer lateral from the public right-of-way line to the public sewer?", the three cities, Carbondale Village of Schomburg, and Village of Addison, they take responsibility for the hookup from the city right-of-way to the main sewer line, and the homeowner takes responsibility from the house to the city right-of-way, which is a sidewalk. And we are saying that we want this sort of setup for our city and our neighborhood, because it has not been proven that all of the areas, although it's been mentioned in previous council meetings, that our, our structure is the same all over, not over, not, not just our community, but all over the US. But nothing, no concrete evidence has been shown that this is the case. So we need some kind of evidence to show that other neighborhoods across the city of Urbana has the same structure that we have. And so we feel that we've been, we're being treated differently. And so that's why we're, we're standing on this proposal and our petition to ask the city to look at the other options that were previously presented. And we know also, I think I mentioned at a previous meeting, the previous meeting November 13th, that the vendors had some bearing on the decision to change and look at it a different way. And it seems that the city is not really looking at the best interest of the neighborhoods or the communities, but the vendors have seemed to have more of influence on the city council's decision, rather than the communities and the needs of the, of the community and the citizens of our community. So that's why we're really adamant about what we're saying here, and we pray that the city council will reconsider this amendment.
Questions? Council? Okay. Thank you. The next slip is from Etha Reed. Am I saying that correctly?
Etha.
Etha, okay. Etha Reed.
I support what you say.
Yes, who is supporting the position that was just expressed, but you choose not to address the members. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. And then Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood also is addressing the sanitary sewer lateral system, wishes to address members at the time the agenda item is presented.
At the time.
At the time. Okay. And that, that's the public input, all the public input I have. So moving on to presentations, and we have from the Urbana Business Association, the Sweet Corn presentation from Paris Baldarota.
Baldarota.
Baldarota. I'll never learn to pronounce the English language.
Yeah, so yeah, my name is Paris Baldarota, and I'm here to do a review of Sweet Corn. And I was actually going to show a video really quick first. Yeah. That's okay. So this is a promo video that we had made following this year's Sweet Corn Festival. Okay. So my presentation, I know everyone's had a really long night, a lot of meetings, so I'm gonna keep it short, just a really quick recap of this year's festival. So this year, we actually had a little bit of increase in sponsors. So we had 44 businesses that contributed and made the festival success this year. So total of cash and in-kind contributions of almost $134,000. We had 44 local vendors, and when we meant stated local, it was within the state of Illinois. And then many new ones from actually our local communities, Champaign-Urbana and our surrounding communities. And we had over 400 community members and organizations that volunteered their time to make the festival happen as well. So of course, without these volunteers, and sponsors and vendors, it wouldn't be able to happen. So when we went to making everything local this year, we, main stage, one Community Together stage, Folken Roots, we added a lot more family-friendly activities. We had the fire performances before the closing act each night, the puzzle hunt, corn eating contest, which actually was really successful. So we had the men, women, and children's levels, and actually the winner of the women's competition ate more corn than the winner of the men's competition. So I think it was by two or three years of corn. And then, of course, increased the kids' zone and activities there. The festival cup actually went over well. The concept was successful, but I think that there will be some tweaks to make it even more successful in the coming years. And then we had, this year, we did a festival guide. So we posted that online prior to the festival, as well as had them printed out this year. So it was a really great way for people to see the vendors that were attending, and guide them through the festival, because we did have a new layout as well. So we changed the location of the main stage and some other areas. So this guided people through the festival, and made it easier for them to find their way around. So overall, the financial stability of the Sweet Corn Festival has actually gotten a lot better. In your packet that I had there in front of you, I did a year-over-year analysis from 2015 through 2017, and, and then you can see the net income was actually, we were in the green this year, so that was great. So with the changes for a community and family-friendly local festival, we're gonna continue to build upon the foundation of the changes that we made this year, and then we keep continuing to redevelop the Sweet Corn Festival to make it even more successful. And I also included in the packet a list of improvements for 2018. So I'm not gonna go through every single one of those right now, because it would take quite a bit of time, but I have included those for your guys' review as well. So that is a quick overview of Sweet Corn Festival. Are there any questions?
Oh, Bill.
So it seemed like the difference, big difference from last, from the previous years were ticket sales, I mean, most of that money was still being spent, but it was just being spent directly with the vendors and with the people selling alcohol, right? I mean, we don't know how much was spent. Is that right? I mean, from...
As far as the difference in, what the income was for ticket sales and then the cup?
I mean, overall, the, the income, the loss was less this year. You know, spending on entertainment was less, and that all worked out fine. I guess, I'm just thinking about as far as the economic impact of the festival goes, even though, you know, I guess it's about $150,000 less collected by UBA because of ticket sales mostly.
So if you look at the...
That money's still being, it's still out there being spent, is my point, right?
Right. Because if you're looking at ticket sales from 2016, let's say, you're also looking at vendor expenses. So you're paying out $94,000 of that, because you're paying that back to the vendors.
Okay.
So that we cut ticket sales, so that's a huge expense, so we don't have to worry about that. So now, at this point, we're keeping 100% of what we're bringing in, not having to pay it out.
Okay. I guess it'll take me a little while to go through that and kind of understand it, but I'm just...
Sure.
Kind of mull in, you know, what the economic impact difference was, if any.
Yeah, Jared.
Good. I'm still waiting with us. So I guess I didn't realize how drastic the difference was, what it was gonna be from last year to this year, practically in half, from 300-plus thousand dollars to $50,000. projected, projected income anyway. And, man, that's crazy. And that's from the loss of extra stages, right, not having to pay, pay time for your bands. What was your, I mean, this is, this has, how many years have you been at this?
Two. 16 and 17, right.
I mean, how did you feel that it went? I mean, this is quite a significant change, and you saw it in like its former life, and kind of did your own thing with it this last year. How did you feel that it went?
I think it went really well. I think there's a lot of things that contributed to it. I think changing the layout brought it more cozy to downtown. You were closer to all the businesses and the bars, and you didn't have to leave the main stage and go all the way out, so you could just pop right over to any bar, get a drink, get some food, whatever it may be. I think the family-friendly atmosphere really helped a lot, too. And attendance was down, but I don't think that that hurt the festival. I think it made it more comfortable to be at the festival, in a positive way.
Yeah, I think plenty of things were, you know, massive amounts of people and being all, all in the outside.
And waiting in lines and things like that, yeah.
Booze cups were, you know, you could get around all the people in the lines, and all shooting for some. So I can see the difference from that. What about the cups? Looks like you're projecting to get $60,000 in sales of cups, because you got a lot of that.
Right. So I think...
You weren't around quite as much as you were thinking they were.
Right. I think the biggest factor in that was that they had to pay for the cup, and then pay for their drink. So one of the huge things that we're going to change this year is the fact that when you buy the cup, your drink comes first. And I think another thing is that waiting, we're gonna do a completely ticketless system in 2018. So we're gonna do all cash and credit cards sales, so you're only standing in one line to get beer, or one line to get corn, so that'll move people through faster as well.
You mean it's in a station or in a line?
So instead, so before you had to wait in line to get your tickets, and then you go to another station, get beer, go to the next station, get corn, wristbanding.
Oh, you just...
Yeah, so you just get in line.
Get right there.
Pay it right there, get your drink or your corn, and go.
I'm gonna do that. Um, one other, one other thing that I, that I noticed is that you save a lot of money at the main stage. You were expecting to spend $20,000, and you got $6,000 billed from MMS, so I was, I'm sure, well...
Oh, for the stage and lights?
Well...
Or are you talking about...
I'm sorry. I'm talking about putting local bands.
Okay, yeah. So the, yeah, the stage and lights are separate than the actual bands, yeah. So what I did is pull, so that $20,000, I kind of broke up into bands, the VIP area, and then the additional activities that we did.
You saved a bunch of money there, too.
Mm-hmm.
That was a good projection versus, versus turnout. I'm amazed at how close your overall income was, to your overall expenses, like at $700. That was pretty interesting, even though it wasn't what you budgeted. I mean, you earned $38,000 less than you planned, but you also spent $20,000 less.
Right.
So kind of worked, kind of worked themselves out. And you were already, you know, plenty of your expenses higher than you needed to, so that worked out. So what was your strategy with cups for next year?
So your first drink will be included with your cup sale, so you don't have to pay $6 for a cup, and then another, pay for the drink, so, and we, still playing with numbers, may possibly even lower the price to maybe five, or something like that. Because I think selling more volume at a lower price, you're gonna make more than, less at a higher price.
Did you make any sense to track tenants?
No, I haven't figured that out yet, or looked into it yet.
I have, I have nothing.
Okay.
But, because the reason I'm asking is because it would be interesting to see what your expected acceptance rate was versus how many cups you sold.
Right.
And, you know, let's say you develop that metric, is, you know, you can see, okay, well, 30% of people would tend to have their bottle cup, or 50% of people would tend to have their bottle cup. Baseline, you know, which was just years ago, and, or, hey.
Right.
Maybe the five-odd cup is a lot better than the six-odd. It does so much better that you need to keep it that way.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Last thing, I didn't see a cost for cups.
It is...
What was that?
It's, it's, it's under, it's actually not in alphabetical order, somehow got out. It's under marketing and advertising, and then cups.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so you spent about $50,000 all of a sudden, and made about $11.5, so you got about six back.
There's, that is, yeah, UBA, and then bars. Yep. Yep.
Well, before this, seeing where the plans go for next year, these are detailed.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, Aaron. I'm sorry, I was, I was, I was just zoning out, forgot what I was doing.
So the reimbursement, basically, from the city is five, was $10,000, or the actual was $15,000?
Correct.
And the difference of 37.5 is, I just wanna make sure I understand this. Are we saying that it was successful, or it was not? It cost us overall 37,000?
So that's a budget difference. So that was, we earned 37,000 less than...
From the budget projection.
Right. So we had budgeted total income of the 155.
Right.
Yeah. So it was, it earned less, yeah.
What I'm saying, when you look at that, is that for your actual expenses, was, was 18?
Our actual expenses, we actually cut $18,000 in expenses that we norm, that we thought we were gonna spend. Mm-hmm.
And the total of that, and you brought in 117,000.
Yeah. It was very close. Yep.
And the other thing was about, I think it was the cup thing that I experienced that was, it was a major drawback.
Mm-hmm.
Buy the cup for $6, and then say, oh, now I'm gonna get in line for something else.
Yeah, so the concept of being able to do open container, people did like, but I don't think enough to pay that, overall. So I think, I still wanna keep that concept going, but lower the price.
So the, the idea of having the businesses open, how do you factor that into the success? Is there any, have you figured out a way for them to report what their revenue, or what their sales were?
We had a post-Sweet Corn meeting with the bars. They did not share that information with me, but they were actually very happy with being included into the festival. So they thought it was successful, as far as the bars and the income that they received from being included, correct?
Yeah, that, well, I don't understand from a business partner's standpoint, they don't want to give you the, the numbers of what they, how they perform. I mean, they gotta understand how that plays into your presentation, or how it plays into the continuation of the, of the Sweet Corn Festival.
I have found that vendors and businesses are not very fond of sharing that information.
Yeah.
But they're very fond of being open during...
Oh, yep. Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna leave that alone.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess that, I think they feel somehow competitive with other people who are in the same or similar business, that, that it's sort of like proprietary information.
Yeah. Yeah, financials are not something normally people like to share.
Yes, Jared.
That brought up one other, one other thing I would, do you do a vendor follow-up survey to say, you know, hey, how did we do this year? Did you like where you were, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
We do, but now that you brought it up, I did not do that this year.
Probably out of follow-up.
Yeah.
Before it gets out of, fresh out of their minds, yeah.
Yeah.
Just because that's something we always did, you know, because that, thank you, that 'll tell you a lot. When you have ticket sales, you can see how much everybody sold, because you know, because they have to turn their tickets into you.
Right.
And you get it back, but when they're not in there, I mean, I know from experience, you can get feedback from people, but they're not gonna tell you their numbers. Businesses are really, really tight about that kind of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, follow-up surveys, and the same goes probably for the downtown businesses as well, for the bars. I mean, it would be interesting to, I would like to read words. I would like to see real feedback from those guys, and, you know, see what they really gotta say, you know? And if they think that it works, if they don't think it works, you know, if they're really happy about it. Because telling you is one thing, but, you know, I like to see it, too.
Mm-hmm. True.
Yeah, sure.
The, if my memory serves me correctly, we did not have those businesses open through the years during the Sweet Corn Festival. Many of them were closed.
They were open, they just weren't included on the festival map or part of the promotions. And they, the open container, people couldn't go in and out with the drinks to wherever they wanted. And the other part is a lot, they didn't have entertainment. So some of the bars offered entertainment during the festival, because we promoted it. So being able to have the entertainment and the open container, and being on the map and the promotions leading up to the festival, actually got people to wanna go in and visit those places as well, versus kind of being excluded, and just an afterthought.
The, so you do factor in how that impacts your projected, the beer sales and the, and the other areas and stuff like that.
Right. So we were counting on the bars selling more cups than they did, as far, as part of the partnership. That did not happen. Because we were counting on that, we opened our bar, our beer stands later on Saturday. 2018, we're gonna open our beer stands at 11:00 AM on Saturday, like we normally do, and not necessarily count on the bars doing those sales for us, but restructuring it to where it falls on us more than them.
And as for the other vendors outside of the bars and the other businesses that were open, are they reluctant to share their, how well they did, even if it's not a business, just some of the other vendors who were, who were out there? I was just wondering, does everyone have that same approach that some people say, hey, this is what we do?
I have never, a market vendor business, you ask for that information, they do not give it to you. Yeah.
The last thing to me is that I did think that the, all the giant inflatables and the way that it was set up, I thought it was, it went well. My grandchildren had it. I thought it was, uh, it went well, my grandchildren had a great time and some other children, so they had interacted with. It was a little, um, there were some tense moments, I think with the laser tag game, um, with the, uh.
Oh, was it virtual reality?
Something like that, yeah, uh, that the children had to aim for the dot in the person's head. I, I thought it was a little, um, I don't, I don't know if I, I, I wasn't digging that one so much, you know, but I just wanted to share that openly, that's a little, you know, some parents thought it was a little concerning.
Okay.
I heard discussing it as well, so.
Makes sense.
Okay. Okay, any more questions or comments? Thank you very much, I, I guess I'll just add a comment. I thought the video was great, I could smell those burgers, I could, I mean, everything, it really captured the atmosphere. I, I would think that's a really good promotional, uh, piece for next year.
Thank you.
Yeah, made, made, right, made us hungry. Um, oh, now I've gotta find the agenda, uh, here we go, okay, next item on the agenda is staff report and, uh.
Good evening. Um, some updates on development that's happening north of Main Street in the downtown, which I think is pretty exciting. Uh, Twenty Five O'Clock Brewery has completed their construction on the brewery, the initial phase, and they're starting brewing. You can get some of their beer now locally at different Urbana restaurants such as Pizza M. and Black Dog. Pizza M. has also announced that they're going to be moving from their current location, and I apologize, the correct location is two oh eight West Main Street, um, to co- locate with Twenty Five O'Clock in two oh eight West Graves. Also in north of Main Street, Broadway Market opened today, uh, so different food you can get there that you might not have been able to find in the region before, such as poke. Also, Ashar African Market opened, and that's at five ten North Cunningham. They are the second African grocery store in Urbana, and they join other international grocery stores like El Progreso and Harvest Market. I've reported on Salt and Light before, um, but they are now open to the public and also, correction, they're located at eighteen nineteen South Philo. Some upcoming events to be aware of, two Urbana Murals on Glass receptions coming up this week. Uh, UBA Connections Over Cocktails is going to be happening January twenty-third and February second, Urbana First Fridays. As we did complete the year, um, December twenty seventeen, the growth year-to-date square footage was slightly higher than last year. Since, I think Urbana's beginning, there have been thirty projects with sixty-six units. Uh, year-to-date square footage added for single family was lower than last year for twenty sixteen, and that's largely due to Highland Green. Thank you, any questions?
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Uh, any further staff reports? Okay, seeing none, uh, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero one dash zero, zero one. Ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty-four, Section twenty-four twenty, reimbursement for sanitary sewer repairs twenty eighteen. And Reverend Underwood, would you prefer to speak prior to staff or would you prefer to respond to them?
No, how do they usually do it? It's whatever is appropriate, um.
Okay, uh, yeah, okay, it's more common for the staff to go first, so then you can.
Is that higher than yours?
Yeah, so you can respond to them.
Because I thought I knew, they usually let the people speak first and then they talk and then vote.
I, I can do it either way, we can do it either way, so what would be, what would you prefer? Would you prefer to go first or after the staff?
Because if he's not, uh, there, uh, do you want him to sit first? Okay, well, I'll wait then.
Okay, great.
All right, uh, Justin Swinford, a civil engineer at the Public Works Department, here with Brad Bennett, Assistant City Engineer. Um, so what you have before you is the ordinance that was, uh, previously discussed on November thirteenth of twenty seventeen. Uh, amending the, let me make sure I get that right. Amending, amending Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty-four, Section twenty-four dash four-nine. Uh, this would shift the, um, existing program for sanitary sewer lateral pavement reimbursement from a lump sum five thousand dollar max program to a unit price program with no maximum reimbursement. Three points to make, uh, on what you have is, uh, when we discussed this previously, the two comments we received from council were to include, um, in a unit price for mobilization. Kind of sets a, a minimum reimbursement, um, that identifies the fact that contractors have to show up and even for a really small unit price of pavement, uh, you're gonna get charged to show up. So we've included that, that's seven hundred and fifty dollars. There was an adjustment to the other unit prices, um, just a reduction to, to balance things out so that the, the total reimbursements would be relatively the same, um, and it wouldn't affect the budget for the program. The other comment was regarding financial assistance, uh, to cover the costs of construction for the time period between payment of the invoice and the reimbursement from the city. The Community Development Department administers an income qualified grant program. Um, it's summarized in the, the council memo, uh, for income qualified houses. Uh, the grant would be up to eight thousand dollars. Um, and those funds would not, that wouldn't be a reimbursement, um, that's, those are funds that would be, um, granted to the, the homeowners towards that cost. So if the pavement reimbursement were to exceed eight thousand dollars, then the city could still provide a reimbursement that would make up the difference there. So for a ten thousand dollar reimbursement, the city would still provide two thousand dollars in addition to the grant. And then the other point to make is just that, uh, this, these changes are to the existing program that would allow for the city to make a, a better use of the, the funds, um, to cover the costs of larger pavement reimbursements while eliminating the large reimbursements for smaller, uh, pa, areas of pavement. This was all designed to, to work within the existing budget constraints that, that we have for this program, so, uh, so as not to increase the sewer benefit tax. And so with that, uh, we'll open it up for, for any questions.
Okay, well, I guess we should hear from, uh, Reverend Underwood and then we can, uh, have, have a, uh, open questions and discussion.
No medication, you know. I might forget. Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and Council. First of all, I would like to say that, um, we received, uh, the memo, uh, Friday afternoon, uh, this Friday afternoon, and I didn't get an opportunity to see it until Saturday afternoon. And we get Bishop Underwood and, uh, and Eldridge Carr, the only two people from Dr. Ellis Subdivision that gets it. And as you know, we got, uh, ninety-six signatures and now a hundred and some. So we had to try to get the information out to, um, uh, the other people, as many people as possible, the people on the email, a lot of people not on email, so with the calls and everything to see. Um, uh, so we tried to, uh, uh, let the people know, uh, what the new information said, as many as possible. That is, and, uh, ev- uh, everyone I talked to agrees with what Eldridge Carr said. Um, a few comments, uh, I would like to say, first of all, what Mother Reed spoke to the last time we were here, uh, about, uh, when we talked about that we received no benefits. We, we've been coming for, what, probably since two thousand and seven, we, uh, discussing, and especially we had a big turnout in two thousand and thirteen, uh, where we had letters and everything, and this is the same issue that we were discussing. And, um, uh, they've been helping a lot of people in, in Urbana. And, uh, our area, Dr. Ellis Subdivision, uh, we don't see, and we don't have any proof that we've received any benefits. And, and the, uh, one, uh, Mrs. Claudia Utley, who's now deceased, her house at thirteen oh two West.
Tree Mountain, Mother.
Yes, that was the lady that she was talking to about, the mayor, uh, telling Mayor Marlin about. And of course, Mr. Joe Lewis and Mr. Lucy Lewis, and they were here in two thousand and thirteen, I think it was. Uh, the videos probably would show that, uh, about what happened with them, and they received no benefits at all from that. And in looking at the current, um, uh, reimbursement program, um, seemingly, and I don't want to repeat what Eldridge Carr has spoken about, but we're still, uh, left out and left behind. Um, uh, but as Reverend Jesse Jackson always say, Bishop, and I was trying to talk to everyone I spoke with today, I was trying to keep hope alive. But it's difficult, it's difficult. Um, uh, just like, uh, uh, and some of them had emails and the persons who didn't, that I tried to read the information to, uh, just like the emergency, emergency grant. Uh, uh, I'm looking at the memo now, uh, number two, the community development, and we talked about that when we were there, income qualified, and then we can go, uh, to the actual, uh, number nine of the actual, um, uh, the actual, uh, ordinance, proposed ordinance. We wouldn't qualify because we own a home, uh, in Dr. Ellis. Now, maybe some of the Habitat for Humanities people might qualif, might qualify, but we don't have any in Dr. Ellis, because some of those people probably would qualify for this, uh, uh, income qualified grant program. But, um, I don't know anybody in Dr. Ellis would qualify.
I don't either.
Because, uh, as it says in number nine, uh, reimbursement is intended to pay only to property owners. The city will not recognize the surrogation claimed by the insurance company or claimed by a tenant, uh, other third party. Now, you know, some people who sign are tenants, but they could not get anything, it would have to be their landlord who would get it. So this would be another, this is, well, none of us who are homeowners would qualify for this because we looking at HUD and the qualification there, so unless it's a, someone say, well, we don't know about targeted program, but we would have to check, but generally, the income guidelines wouldn't. Uh, so that's, uh, um, everyone that I talked to said, no, we wouldn't qualify for this program because we're not, we're black, but we're not poor, because in, in nineteen sixty-two, you know, a lot of us came from Dunbar Court, but thank God I didn't, because I was living in Mr. Lewis's new house. We rented from them, but, uh, and a lot of people who, who live there, I know, my time is running out, but I'm just trying to make it clear that we're gonna be left out and in some other areas, uh, uh, that they see. Now, they said Evelyn, a lot of people call me Evelyn, which is fine, they say, uh, I thought the city look out for more than their employees, but if everything you see in the, they say, in the city's best interest. Well, aren't we the city? We're the citizens, so they were very disgruntled about how this is written, uh, the ordinance. Uh, everything for the city, the city's interests, what about us? They said, we're the citizens, the citizens read, uh, uh, and one thing, they say, they looking out, uh, for the, the director of the city administrator, he's not even a, a she, I thought it might be a she, they're not even here yet. So number five, uh, I'm just talking about a lot of things that some of the people talk to me about, and I think since they are not here, they might be listening or looking, but I think I bring this forward because I got five minutes. Okay, the Public Works Director, so they say, well, if the city council is doing it, why do, uh, the final authority have to be in the city administrator? Why can't we appeal it if we were to agree to this back up to the city council or the mayor? But, you know, so, so they're just disregarding us like they always do, that's what, uh, people are thinking. It's, you know, uh, you know, we, we're just still being left out and, so people really feel that they're, they don't matter. And I think Eldridge Carr talked a little bit about that, and my time is running out. Was there anything else, Bishop, that I told you that people were saying that I didn't cover, um?
I covered most of it.
Okay, so anyway, those are some of the things, maybe, uh, um, qualified, well, and says, uh, some say, again, this does not apply to us, we're atypical. There's nothing, like I said last time, when you showed the pictures, remember the pink thing up there? I said the pink thing, you know, like the, the flying carpet, but you came all the way to the middle. But we have to go all the way across the street, and, and Eldridge Carr's mentioned that, to somebody else's yard and, and, uh, we're atypical, Dr. Ellis Subdivision is atypical, we are anomaly. None of this applied to us, and we won't get the benefits. All of this looked good, like someone said, when, uh, which one was that number, uh, was it number seven? Said it looks good, or maybe it was number with the ninety-five dollars. But we got to do three times more because we got to go all the way across the, said, call, it's not gonna benefit us. So we've got to stay here maybe another ten years, but we not giving up. So just look for us, I'm seventy-five now, I, I asked God for a hundred, so I got twenty five more years, y'all gonna have to see me. Eric, you might be a hole like me.
I'm seventy-nine, so I don't think I'm gonna make it as long as you.
Thank you. I'm trying to make a joke, but really, this is serious. This is, we, we're left out, we're not included. Dr. Ellis Subdivision, that is. We're anomaly, we're atypical, we're not like everybody else. Our subdivision is different.
Well, I think, yeah, we have a lot to talk about, um, so, Aaron, yes?
So my que, well, first of all, thank you all for coming. You're supposed to stay diligent on the issues that are important to you, and I do think you've pointed out something that's, uh, I think is a legitimate question on number five, and I wanted, um, the gentleman to come back up. I wanted some clarity on that. I do want to, I, I, I thought I, I don't know, Dr. Underwood and Bishop, if you misunderstood, number nine, the reimbursement is intended to be paid to the property owner, so most of the people that I think I have spoken to and that you all have brought forth are property owners.
Yeah, I know it to the property owner, I understand that. Oh, no, I understand, I understand it's gonna be paid to the property owner, but these people are not HUD people. I mean, they're not in the income bracket.
Okay.
They're not in the income bracket, that's what I was trying to make a point, but with number nine, I didn't misunderstand number nine, but what the people were saying with number nine, I, I understand that perfectly, and they will understand that perfectly, but, uh, I was just saying, just cause some tenant signed it, you know, they will not, will not be paid to a tenant or anything like that. Tenants might be poor, but, who live there, but they not, you know, counted as property owners. All the people there are counted as property owners, but outside Dr. Ellis, those people that live in, um, Habitat for Humanities, those are poor people, you know, well, most of them, some are military people, but they, they're low income, because my husband used to help them build their homes, but most of people never had a home, you know, and they are targeted. In other words, they use the program to get in, so they might be able to use targeted funds to be helped in this program, but they don't live in Dr. Ellis. I'm glad for them, but they are not in Dr. Ellis Subdivision. We don't have anything like that up in Dr. Ellis Subdivision. We do have some tenants type people live there, but this is a home, it's the people that own the homes that are well, you know, they, uh, I mean, just like, you know, we, we're homeowners and we, but we might not have, uh, uh, the kind of money. Well, you know, when you're black, you're not gonna be able to get money from the banks like the white people. You know, I'm seventy-five years old from the Backwoods in Mississippi, and I'm just gonna speak the truth. You know that, and everybody here know that. So, uh, it's gonna be harder for us to get along, it's gonna be harder for us to even get things fixed upfront with money, because we don't have the kind of money to get to the banks. with money because we don't have the kind of money to get to the banks. So anyway, okay.
So the question in number, point number five about the city administrator would be the final authority. I don't, that's something that, I don't know, just sort of sticking out to me as well. Why wouldn't, I, I don't understand why the city administrator would be the final authority on making a decision about this.
I believe that line was included in cases where there's a significant number of reimbursement requests or applications such that the budget would not cover that, would allow for prioritization, or, and the city attorney may be able to clarify. I think, I'm not sure if, oh, sorry, or, maybe Bill, I guess, what exactly that line was, or that item was for.
It's item five.
I can make a suggestion. Not, not, I mean, who determines an appeal in something like this is a matter of policy. I think, though I wasn't involved in drafting this proposed ordinance, I suspect what it was is you've got the Public Works Department managing this situation, and somebody in Public Works makes a determination. To try to interject a separate viewpoint for an appeal, the ordinance referenced the city administrator. We have a number of ordinances in the city that if some department makes a determination and there's an internal appeal, it will go, currently, it's written to the mayor. One example is our liquor ordinance, of course, the mayor is also our liquor commissioner. But conceptually, the mayor is somebody different than the, you know, the department who is responsible for the program. And so, I think the view is the mayor, or in this case, the city administrator, would be able to take an independent look. And, you know, hopefully, and our experience has been, that that independent view has been objective, hasn't been just a rubber stamp for a department head or a division head. That, that is my guess insofar as why I referenced the city administrator. Now, the question is, right now, we don't have one, but we will.
So if we pass this now and there's some dispute, and we don't have a city administrator, how do we pass a policy for, for someone who we don't even have in place to do what the policy says they're supposed to do?
Frankly, what I would recommend is that rather than referencing the city administrator, it references the mayor or the mayor's designee, which could be, when the city administrator joins us, could be him or her.
The other question I have is in relationship to a point that was raised about number nine. Now, I would logically conclude that if I was the landlord, and I was the property owner, and I had a tenant living there, and there was any sort of major structural concerns, the landlord is responsible for it. So I just want to make sure that publicly it's clear then that if the tenant is in that situation, how does the landlord, is the landlord by law forced to carry that complete burden? So let's say if the landlord takes the position of Dr. Ellis subdivision people and say, hey, no, I'm not, I'm only responsible from the lateral and what's in my property. I'm not responsible for digging across the sidewalk and the pub, and the street and into somebody else's yard. That's the city's responsibility. What position does that leave the tenant in? Am I, is my question clear, does somebody, okay.
Landlord is a property owner.
Speak into the microphone.
Huh?
Speak into the microphone.
It's, it's on, is it working? The landlord is a property owner, the same, has the same rights and responsibilities vis-à-vis the property itself, separate from the tenant's interest. The landlord is the property owner, just like an owner occupied house. That owner is the owner of the property. Now, who ultimately has the responsibility for the lateral would, in terms of, if you're asking between the tenant and the landlord, that would be governed by the lease. If the lease is silent, the landlord is responsible. There are leases when it comes to, you know, tenants, where tenants assume the responsibility of maintaining the property. Every lease is probably somewhat different, or at least falls into one side or the other in terms of the fact that the lateral goes under the street or into the, across the street property. I don't think being a landlord versus an occupied property owner, there's any difference.
Well, I just think from an educational standpoint, even for the folks who are in Dr. Ellis, if they are tenants then, to be very careful about the lease that they sign so that they, so that they're not in a situation like that, so.
Jim's right, but for, in most properties, you're right about making sure at the lease, but for, typically for utilities that have to be paid for, like electrical, water, and sewer, sometimes sewer use fees, which is connected to the water fees, that, that could be, that could be in the lease for the tenant to pay or the landlord to pay. But when it comes to the actual structure itself, the, in my opinion, this would be considered part of the building itself. And from a code standpoint, we would require the owner of the property to ensure that that was properly connected to the sewer line. And I don't know that you could write that into the lease that the tenant was responsible. So like you said, the best thing to do would make sure, be to make sure that the tenant, and we also have the, we have certain things in our ordinance, our tenant landlord ordinance, where things are prohibited, things are allowed, and they need to be educated about that as well. But in this case, say, in the case that you talked about, sewer line fails, the tenants live in there, they don't have any recourse, they don't have, and the landlord's unwilling to do anything. Well, we would ask, we would make sure the tenant got relocated into suitable facilities or suitable place of living. And then we also have a, part of our landlord tenant ordinance would require him, the landlord, to compensate the tenant based on what our landlord tenant regulations, you know, articulate. So there's a couple of different approaches to that. But most importantly, for people to understand, they need to be protected by their lease, that's certainly a valid point.
Just one last thing for me. Is there any sort of income, I didn't see it in here, but I want to make sure I'm clear. Are there any income guidelines that say some people qualify and some people don't based upon their income?
Well, in this ord, I think the question is about this ordinance, yeah.
I think there are some guidelines in there, so you, that says that.
Oops, sorry, sorry. So as, as far as the ordinance goes, there are no income guidelines. That was only pertaining to the grant program.
So the grant program, which was an emergency grant, if you are in a particular bracket of income, then you don't qualify for that?
Correct.
That eight thousand dollars.
Correct.
But the thing is, there's a limitation of fifty, I mean, four thousand or, what, that limitation.
That the city would pay.
Yeah, there's a limitation, help me, Brother Brad, I mean, someone of y'all. What is that limitation? There's a limitation, there's been a change, and somebody said, what did they say, they're tapping, playing games? What, this one had a limitation, and what, oh, this here, okay. A, illegal sanitary sewer connection. If, if an illegal sanitary sewer is connected to the storm system, here is four thousand dollars of fifty percent, whichever is lower. So they're saying they're taking from one and giving to the other. Now, is this, this is the ordinance, right? So they got a limit on this, and then they're going to give you more on, on the other. How did they say? Yeah, they're going to give you more than that, but then they're going to take away on one and give you more of the other. Is that right, are they writing this?
That section of the ordinance pertains to an illegal sanitary sewer connection to the city's storm sewer, in which case the owner would be accountable for fifty percent of the cost of disconnecting that sanitary sewer connection to the storm sewer. So that's part of the existing ordinance that will remain unchanged with this amendment.
But you know, but they had this on every one of them, right? They had this, because this, because that's what confused me when I started dealing with this, that illegal thing, that illegal, you know, but this was all part of the reimbursement. That was confusing me in the beginning until I talked to Brother Brad about that.
Typically, the sanitary sewer lateral.
I don't brother him, excuse me, I'm not in church. Mr. Brad Bennett.
The pavement reimbursement program typically does not include the illegal sanitary sewer connection.
Okay, now, what is, under twenty-four hyphen four nine, you got A and B, but under, in every one, you had the same thing, right? You had A and B, you had the legal, because that was the name of it, you had the same thing. So when we were talking about this, so A and B is not together?
They are included in the same section of the city code, but this ordinance is not amending section, or subsection A of the.
So subsection A has nothing to do with it. So that limitation of fifty percent does not have anything to do with anything.
Does not have to do with the pavement reimbursement program.
But last time, when we had the other one, that didn't have anything to do with that one either?
Yeah, so the previous program was a maximum reimbursement of five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And we're eliminating that maximum five thousand dollar reimbursement to allow for the reimbursement for the costs of replacing the entire width of the street in some cases.
And we're going to use this.
Correct.
This, that'll take the place of that. So maybe that's why they were misunderstanding that. Because I know in that section, they talk about the illegal, on, we were looking at all sections. And we've been, you know, we had all that out when we were down to the church, and we were looking at all of, we were looking at all of the different ones, and they were all in the same section. So that's maybe why we misunderstood. So you're saying we were replacing B, and B has, you did away with that other one altogether. So A has nothing to do with that, so y'all are not playing games.
No, A will remain unchanged and does not pertain to the pavement reimbursement.
Illegal sanitation is something entirely different.
And for the, and just to finish my thought, for the program, for the change to the ordinance, there's no income requirement or brackets as it relates to the ordinance. It's strictly for the grant, which is basically designed for lower-income people who can't, who would be even more adversely affected by this, this process or if they had to go through something like that. Okay, so I just want to make sure that that was clear, there was no misunderstandings there. And I think I just wanted to address one of the points that Eldridge Carr raised about vendors seeming to be more, having more influence. Actually, what we were trying to do was prevent vendors from gouging, in essence, right? Basically, taking advantage of the fact that the money was there, and they would just give you some particular number or cost and then reap the benefits of the entire program, get the maximum out of the program. So we wanted to put in standards and measurements that would allow us to be able to more accurately determine what they should charge us. So it was not that the vendors were getting more preference or more influence than the people who were being affected. We were actually trying to make sure we were doing, being good stewards of the tax dollars and not just giving them away. That is my understanding of what we were discussing that night.
We were saying that the city have all this equipment to do all the stuff that the vendors are doing, but the vendor's saying that if the city do it, then they're going to lose business. So in essence, it's a catch twenty-two.
So we, now, I can't, Bill or somebody else can speak from the public works standpoint, but the ability for us, as we looked at the map and looked at all the laterals that were done all over the city of Urbana, right? From what I have seen and then talking to staff, we don't have the capacity to do that on, on an everyday basis or whenever those things come up. And sometimes they're emergency situations that we would have to pay overtime and various other different things to cover, which could be much more costly to us at the city. And the city is, I'm sorry.
But we're here to represent Dr. Ellis subdivision, and if those people were concerned, they would be here speaking for themselves. We're here to represent Dr. Ellis subdivision, and we're speaking for the things that's happening to us, and we, we feel like that we should get some solemnity.
I, I don't, I understand the, I'm the representative for Ward Three. And I understand where you're coming from, and I'm trying to do the best that I can to make sure that I'm hearing those concerns and fighting for it, to make sure that there's adequate reimbursement for that. I also have a responsibility to the greater city because I don't just represent the Ward Three. And I am saying that I do believe that the program that we have set up right now, I don't know how, and, and we can speak publicly about this, if we had a program to reimburse every citizen in Urbana who had this particular problem, I don't know if we would be able to do that. Now, maybe we could, maybe we could have a program where everyone are paid.
What we are saying is this, that we pay sewer tax, and what are the sewer taxes for?
Well, the sewer taxes are for, for everyone to have access to the sewer and the maintenance of the sewer system that we have. If we pay taxes on something, and say I pay five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars in sewer taxes over the years of me being here, it doesn't mean that I get to get a five thousand or ten thousand dollar service, right? It's, we're just paying into a pool so that everybody has access and has the service.
So if, if we have the service, then if it's in the city right of way and we paying taxes to the city, the city should take care of the things in the city right of way, that's what we're saying.
I agree with you that there was a tragic mistake made in the development in Dr. Ellis subdivision, and it looks as though it happened in various other areas across the city, where people are, they, Dr. Ellis subdivision is not the only place where laterals are, and, and access to the main is underneath the city's right of way and stuff like that. And I think there was, have been some very poor designs done, and I don't know how to fix that personally. I don't know if, as representatives of the city, which is all of us, because we are indeed all of the city, because we're all paying for it.
We're going to find out, because we believe that we are different. That's why we need to look underground, because there's nobody, we've never heard of anyone to say that they've got to go all the way across the street and then in somebody else's yard. And we, we know people who work, we had nineteen people, and we had, look, see, we have all emails, and we've, we're trying to get help, because we have all these emails. And we've got people who say, and they work for the city, but they can't talk because they don't want their people to be fired, you see? And we know Dr. Ellis is different, and they know this gentleman got away with every, all kind of stuff over there in our neighborhood. And that there's nobody else have to go all the way across the street and do what we have to do. And when Robert Lewis was on this council, and Mr. Smyk knowing, and they was going a different route, and then when those men came here, everything changed around. And then we, we was trying to get help, we were trying to get help right here. And we got tapes to show it when we did the, we got, and we've watched the tapes.
Okay, I think staff, staff wants to clarify something.
Okay.
So, I mean, we, we can show on city sewer maps that it's not necessarily, it's not a very unique situation for a homeowner to have to cross the entire street to repair their sewer lateral. And so this program is recognizing the fact and addressing that, that fact that several property owners do have to cross the entire street. And so this program was designed to allow for the reimbursement for the pavement, those pavement costs that would well exceed five thousand dollars. So that's, the goal here is to address those situations.
Y'all have been helping all those people. You've got a list of people, I asked for it two thousand thirteen. You say you can give me the names of those people, but y'all got the names of those people. None of the people in our area have been helped.
We've reimbursed every application that we've received in that area.
Y'all keep saying that. But maybe we're going to have to get lawyers and that, you know, because y'all keep saying the same thing, but y'all never give us proof. And we've, we've tried to get four years, and we've done all can, we've tried to pay to get four years, we still not getting the answers.
If there's a resident that feels that they haven't been, they haven't received a reimbursement, then they're welcome to, to provide that application to us and we could discuss it with them, but no one has come forward with that information.
So, so, this number, B here, sanitary sewer lateral, this is dealing only with the actual pipe, this is not dealing with the pavement. Is this dealing with the pavement? No, it's dealing with the pipe only, right?
The, the, the table deals with the pavement.
The pavement?
Yeah.
So, what, I don't understand, so are you gonna reimburse for the pavement as well as?
This, the program is designed to reimburse for the cost of the pavement, not.
Up to how much?
And there's no maximum reimbursement. It's according to this unit price schedule, and that would be applied to the, the quantities of the pavement that's replaced.
So, I said 95% of the lateral, but it didn't say anything about the pavement or anything, not in this?
Well, it's of the total cost of the sanitary sewer lateral repair, so that would be the entire cost of the repair, including the pavement.
But it didn't say that did.
That 95% is meant to prevent a situation where a homeowner would actually profit from this program.
Oh, no, we're not talking about that, but sir, it didn't say, it said lateral repair, it did not say anything about pavement or all those surrounding costs, not in this?
That would, I think it, it would be considered to include the entire, it'd be the one invoice received.
So, you're saying it's inherent in there, but it did not state it.
I'm not sure that it.
I'm, I'm looking, because I, and there were other people who looked at this, a lot of people, didn't Bishop? And they didn't see, and these intelligent folks, but I know they're not in your field, I'm sure they're not qualified, but they didn't see that. Reimbursement is limited to the total cost of a sanitary sewer service lateral repair, but service lateral is the pipe, that's what they were thinking, the pipe, but they, what you're saying is the surrounding costs, like what they said in A.
Yeah, I, I think the key thing is.
Street pavement and sidewalk and necessary backfill to effectuate such removal and replacement. Is that right? That's what you're saying? We can go back to A and get that other stuff? Although A is.
No, that, that's a separate program.
I know, but can you get the street pavement and sidewalk and necessary backfill to effectuate such removal?
Excuse me, Charlie has reminded me that we've reached the statutory time, so I need a motion to extend the meeting if we're going to continue.
So, move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And, in favor?
Do we need to put a time on?
Oh, we probably do need to put a time, so the motion is for, how long?
10 minutes.
10 minutes? Is that, is that fair?
I would say at least, we'll make the motion for 30 minutes, and hopefully we'll be done before, I think we'll be clear before then.
You want to?
I'll, I'll support 30.
Okay, who's, who's in favor of 30? Or, I mean, the maximum of 30, at least allowing through this. Signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay. Yes, Mr. Gray. Oh, I was, I thought maybe you'd come up to shed a blind and clear light on all of these issues.
I'm gonna try to do that. I want to try this, make this very simple. There's two things before you, basically, actually, one. One is an ordinance that we've talked about for quite some time, to make a fair reimbursement to property owners that have sewer lateral repairs within public right-of-way, and Brad Bennett and Justin Swinford have, I think, done an admirable job in explaining that, and that's what's before you tonight in the ordinance. The second choice, which would take perhaps more discussion or more meetings, is, is that what the residents of Dr. Ellis are suggesting is, is that the city pay for all costs associated with the sewer lateral repair, sanitary sewer lateral repair within the public right-of-way. And Justin has gone through that cost, and if council wants to, it would cost about $6 per month per every household in the city, or $72 a year. So, that's what we estimate to be the cost. So, if you want to have a program, like the city of, or Village of Schaumburg, or this Village of Addison, or what have you, then it would be a cost increase of at least $70, $72 per year, per household every year. That would, as we estimate, would cover all the cost expenses within public right-of-way. That is not what we had been directed to do previously, but for 10 years or longer, the residents of Dr. Ellis have been asking for this, and it's, to me, I don't really want you to have to come here 25 more years, but, I mean, really, the decision is, do you want to go with a 100% reimbursement, that's gonna be $72 per household per year in the sewer benefit tax, or stick with the current program with no increase per se, to do the program that's modified, we believe that will reflect better for that lateral that goes all the way across the street, as we've heard testimony tonight, or not all the way across the street, it's gonna be more proportional to the expense of the repair across the street. We feel this is a fairer way to do it, but if you want to go to 100% cost, then it's a revised ordinance, and it's gonna be a higher increase to all the property owners that have a home, or a business, or apartment, or what have you. Household, $72, larger businesses, more money, depends on your water use.
A point on the speaker, may I have a point on the speaker?
Anyway, I just wanted to try to clarify, that's what it comes down to, one or the other, and hopefully I clarified it.
No, you didn't. A point on the speaker, no, before you go, I have a point on the speaker, please, sir. Nah, but what, you didn't really clarify. Nah, but you're trying to say, if you're saying that we're the same as everyone else in the city, then why not? But we're not the same as anyone else, everyone else, because all what y'all have been doing is working for everybody else in the city, other than Dr. Ellis, because we are an anomaly. We are atypical. Y'all showed it. They said this is what's typical, but when you get to us, we are atypical. We are an anomaly. We are an aberration. Dr. Ellis is. But if it's like, if everybody else is going through the same thing, then why not, like Eldridge Carr said? If all the other people's going through that problem, then why not have it for everybody? We're not, so, don't discriminate against us because we are atypical. And we, I'm saying, we're saying, that's what we came in the beginning to say, and people who've worked for the city can say, and we didn't come here saying because we want, we didn't, we didn't want to be accusatory, but they let this man get away with all of his stuff, Norm Patton, is, you know, who built it, get away with all of his stuff, maybe it's not you guys, now, because y'all weren't here then, and, and did anything he wanted to, the first African-American subdivision in Havana, and now we are paying for it, because it should have been, people know, Bishop, we had 19 people, but the University of Illinois would not work with us, because they said, they told us, finally, didn't we, we got emails to show, that the city would not allow them to work with us. Am I lying, y'all? They told us, they wouldn't allow them to work with us. So, we were gonna have to go out of town, when we went to the meeting, when they had it down there, and you were there, you went on the city council, and you were there when we talked with some people out of town, to try to get them to work with us. We could not, and we got people who was willing to talk.
I, I think, I think at this stage, we have to move over to council discussion.
Okay, I'm ready to go.
Thanks, thanks for your, thanks for your contribution.
I just tried to give disclosure, full disclosure.
Sure.
This is the first time I've got, gave full disclosure, but it's in emails. And, and when Rex Bradfield was gonna try to help us, and, and wanted to meet way back then, and attorney, it's the only time, but we were gonna try to get the University of Illinois departments to help us, and they, and I got the emails, and, and, but they didn't put in writing that what was keeping them from helping us, but they told us, finally. While we couldn't get no help, and we were gonna go out of town and try to get one, some of the departments to help us. And we went down there, when they had people from New York and all, down at the Champagne Public Library, trying to get people to come and try to help us, because we were not qualified to do, but now we trying to get some help.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Jared.
I, I think maybe, I'm ready to move this forward, but perhaps to, with one amendment, I'd like to add language to Part Two, that makes it more clear exactly what is included in the sanitary sewer service lateral repair, so that folks will more clearly understand what all is in there, that it includes backfill, that it includes curb replacement, that it includes pavement replacement, et cetera, et cetera. I think with that, other language would clear up some of the confusion about what it's meant for.
Sound like a friendly amendment?
I'm not sure what I, what exactly we need to do to.
I think.
Mr. Sun.
Is this working now?
Yes.
I think if you read it carefully, I think it's clear. B is entitled sanitary sewer laterals, and our citizens are asking, is it just the pipe? And if you looked at just that italicized, I could see where one might think that that's it. But it says, "If sanitary sewer lateral repairs are required in a city right-of-way, the city shall reimburse property owners according to the following unit prices." And I'm not quite sure what mobilization, demobilization is, other than possibly digging up and then finishing off the surface, huh?
It's a show-up fee, essentially a show-up fee, yeah.
But, if it happens to involve going under or digging up a brick street, that's not the pipe, that's the street, and it provides for $400 reimbursement per square yard, correct?
Yes.
You go down one, I don't know what HMA stands for, but again, it's a form of street pavement, and in that case, for that type of street, I, one gets $225 per square yard. That's not the pipe, that's whatever HMA stands for, street pavement. And you go down this, PCC is Portland Concrete Cement, I believe, and again, that's repair at $250 per square yard for street pavement. Again, that's not the pipe. Then you go down one step further to Portland Concrete Cement, and it's $75 lineal foot for the curb and gutter work. Again, that's not the pipe. So, I think the table clarifies the work, as well as the work that might need to be done to the pipe. I think just that table alone clarifies it. And then there are limitations and regulations applying, and those are the 1 through 10. Now, if, if that's not clear, then obviously amend it.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that it, it isn't, it must not be 100% clear, because it was misinterpreted, so, let's make it 100% clear, I think it's fine. And, so, if you guys can do that before we come to full council, assuming that we do recommend to the council, and I guess there's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, is there, yes, Bill?
Also on item five, instead of city administrator, if we could put mayor or mayors designate, I think that'd be an improvement.
Yes. I believe I saw the mayor annotating her copy in that, with that respect. It's done, yeah. Okay. Any other, any other discussion? Yes, Bill?
It's just a, a brief question about the property owner. I know, does this also apply to commercial property?
Yes.
So, if a commercial property has a triple net lease, and the person leasing the property is completely responsible for the property, would they be able to get reimbursed if they're not the property owner?
That's a good question.
I think we'd look to see who, contact the property owner first, see who pays, who paid, and.
So, whoever's responsible for the sewer. Okay, if there's any changes that legal thinks we need to make in order to make that happen, then we could do that, too.
Okay, further discussion. Ready to move? In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, now.
No further business?
And I believe that. There being no further business before this body, it stands adjourned.